That have signed up, especially the members that haven't done this before. I know Maria, she kind of knows what she's getting into and so does Doug. But for everybody else, thank you for your willingness to participate in this process. Extremely valuable that we have competent, capable people representing our community and diverse opinions of ideas so that we can come up with the best decisions that work for our community. So, thank you for those people for running. Any public comment on that? Okay, can I get a, was there an action on that?
It's from information only.
Information only.
Down there.
Okay, so no action required.
Correct.
Alright. So, we're gonna move on to... Skipped 10A, right? So, we're going on to 10B, Economic Opportunities Analysis Update. That's ordinance number 2365. So, are there any declarations of conflict of interest from the council? Alright, seeing none. I'm gonna have the hearing guidelines now presented by city staff, planner director, planning director Clint Spencer. Welcome Clint.
Thank you. Tonight, these guidelines are a little bit different. They've been prepared by our land use council for legislative land use hearings instead of quasi judicial. So, bear with me. The public hearing before the Hermiston City Council is on the proposal by the city to amend the City of Hermiston Comprehensive Plan and Policies implementing statewide planning goal nine through the adoption of an updated Economic Opportunities Analysis, or EOA. To testify tonight, approach the microphone and state your name and mailing address. Failure to participate or raise an issue precludes the right to file an appeal. If you have a written document that you would like the council to consider, please hand a copy to the city manager. Tonight's hearing is legislative. A legislative hearing means that the city is not approving a site-specific application. Tonight's hearing is not a quasi judicial hearing. This means you do not have to raise a particular issue, nor is there a right to have a continuance of this hearing or to leave the written record open following tonight's public hearing. The city council can decide to grant either request before it closes tonight's hearing, but it is not required to do so. The hearing will begin with staff presenting a report to the city council. Following the staff report, persons in support of the amendment may testify, followed by those in opposition, and ending with persons who are neutral or only have questions to ask the council. Please direct your testimony and questions to the mayor. Each person may testify once and is limited to five minutes. If someone has testified before you and you agree with their position, you can simply state that. Following the end of public testimony, staff will recap and ask if the council has any questions for staff. Following the staff recap and council questions, the council will decide if it wants to deliberate to a decision tonight or continue the public hearing or leave the written record open for additional public testimony without another public hearing. No one has the ability to present rebuttal testimony tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spencer, we'll now open the hearing. City staff will now present its report.
Thank you. I want to introduce, sitting next to me tonight is Brendan Buckley with Johnson Economics. He's been, Johnson Economics is the firm that has prepared this economic opportunities analysis for us that you are considering tonight. So, as you are aware, the council has made one of the goals for this year and for the last couple of years to pursue an expansion of our urban growth boundary. Whenever we're considering any type of expansion to the urban growth boundary, we have to look at our overall land supply and our projected needs over the next 20 years. We have a current economic opportunities analysis which was developed in 2014 as part of our periodic review at that point in time, which looked at our employment needs through the year 2035 essentially. And we're now a good 10 years down the road. We've also been blessed in that a large portion of our employment land has been absorbed through data centers. We went from having 500 acres available and then basically in the space of six months, lost 300 acres of our available land. So, that prompted us to look at, are we at a point where we need to be looking at an urban growth boundary amendment? We no longer have any parcels that are over 100 acres that are available. They're all spoken for. So, are we going to be able to accommodate future economic demand? That led us to pursue this economic opportunities analysis where you have basically a buildable land inventory. You look at what you have within the UGB and then you forecast out where are different employment drivers going to be over the next 20 years. Upshot of that report is that we're probably looking at a deficiency of about 1,000 to 1,400 acres to accommodate our 20-year supply of employment lands. That's the important thing that we need to be looking at. Our comprehensive plan said that we had enough land, but changes in economic development have led it to where now we are looking at a deficiency. So, we have to excise the current economic opportunities analysis out of our comp plan and then adopt this new one that is based on more updated and current data. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Brendan to kind of go through the proposal with you.
Welcome Brendan.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here tonight. So, I'm gonna talk about the project we've been working on. I'm part of the consulting team. We also had a partner firm that we've worked with quite a bit called McKinsey to help do the lands analysis. And I'm just gonna give an overview of the much more detailed materials that you have in your packet. And of course, I can answer any questions or provide any more context you need. So... Here we go, thanks. So, what is this? Economic Opportunities Analysis. Clint just summarized it pretty well, but the, it's a fancy name that comes from the state process. But this is what you're required to do. It's a study of your employment lands, both the ones that you have remaining and how much need you have for additional employment lands over the next 20 years. This is the process that's required as you go through those planning steps to look at your urban growth boundary. There's a parallel process for residential lands and this is for employment lands which are basically defined as any land that's zoned, either commercial or industrial. So, the parts of the EOA are to look at trends and, you know, past trends, past job growth. Look at the community's economic development goals and target industries. Inventory the amount of land you have left and then look at what that means. What's, what are the results from those findings? And what does it mean for your future planning? So, the components of the EOA itself, this is basically what you have in your packet, is the EOA report that talks about most of the components I just mentioned. It has a forecast of job growth and land need for employment over 20 years. And then it compares that to the land inventory. There, the two appendices are important for this report. One was a extra look that we've taken at the needs of data centers as they've been developed in recent years in both this area, Hermiston itself, but then Umatilla County and Morro County. And we'll, I'll talk more about that in a minute. And the appendix B is, talks more about the actual land inventory of land you have left in much more detail and lays out the methodology by which that was done. So, some important steps in this process. We have talked to Planning Commission twice about this material, first in May. That led to a further discussion with the state, the DLCD department about that draft and got some good feedback from them on the things that they're looking for and their understanding of what the EOA needed to address. And so, we made some improvements and revisions to address their comments and brought it back to Planning Commission in August and they have recommended that we bring it to the council. The, so first we start with a vision statement. The City of Hermiston, and this is something that we discussed with the Planning Commission along the way. The City of Hermiston aspires to become the regional center for trade and industry through the following actions: ensuring an adequate supply of industrial land, ensuring an adequate supply of commercial land, removing barriers for commercial redevelopment of land that might support more infill or newer commercial uses, continue to provide leadership in identifying and locating new, expanding existing types of businesses. And I think that includes the growth of the data center industry in the area and provide adequate infrastructure to support all this growth, either in the short term or long term over the 20-year planning period. So, we get down to the employment forecasting, which leads to our estimate of how much employment land will be needed over the planning period. We start with a current employment profile. We get information on current employment for actual firms located in the city via the state. And we start with that as sort of our baseline. And then we talk about the growth forecast. So, there are some forecasts by industry sector that we can get from the state. But then through this process, communities are allowed to also talk about what are the local target industries? What the, what has been growing here? What do we see as areas of particular promise or potential that may not be reflected in those sort of baseline state forecasts that really cover a broader region than just the city? So, what you see on the right there is a breakdown of, and that's our estimate of current employment. It's just a little short of 10,000 jobs in Hermiston. Those are either held by residents, but many of them are also held by people who commute into the community just as other local residents commute out to jobs in other places. So, you have, your largest sectors right now are healthcare and social assistance, followed by transportation, warehousing and utilities and retail trade. Your tourism-related industries is a, kind of follows up not far behind there in terms of the share of total employment. So, in looking at potential target industries, what's been strong in Hermiston and what might show some promise? There's various indicators that we look at. There's much more detail on all these in the report. But we're looking at things as, such as what is well represented now in Hermiston relative to how those sectors are represented in, across the state or nationwide, which have been growing the fastest and which are, which are forecasted by the state to show the most growth in sort of northeastern Oregon. From that, we come with our adjusted growth forecast over the next 20 years and that's what's represented here. So, we forecast that by 2044, at the end of the planning period, we'll get to about 15,000 total jobs. So, that's a growth of 5,000 jobs or roughly 50% over the current level. And that's growth of 2.1% annually. It's a, it's a fast growth rate, but it is not that much faster than what's actually been achieved here in Hermiston since 2010. So, you've had a growth, employment growth rate of 1.8% already. And so, it represents slightly faster growth. You'll see from the chart that growth in the information sector, which includes the data center industry, is a major component of the forecasted growth. The other elements of strong growth are the healthcare and social assistance, retail, some of the, some of these sectors that are already strongly represented. And then also, strong growth is forecasted in the construction industry because the amount of growth happening and development in the data center and other industries is, is so strong that construction to support that is expected to continue growth. So, when we talk about that strong growth in the information sector, data centers specifically, what are we talking about? So, we took a look at, for this report, both for our own needs and then also in response to more follow-up questions from DLCD, we looked at sort of what has been happening regionally for data centers, both in Umatilla County and in Morro County. And this is really the, the sort of heart in this map here between Boardman and Hermiston of where most of this activity's been taking place. So, since 2014, past 10 years, we found nine data centers have been completed, but it's important to note that seven of those nine are just in the last five years. So, this activity has actually been accelerating. We've identified eight that are underway or planned currently. So, that would, that's a total of 17 of these hyperscale data centers completed over a 12-year period or roughly 1.5 per year. So, when you look at the scale of these developments, that's a lot of high-value development that has been happening. And the pace really in the last five years is even faster than what it was before that. So, the centers that we identified average a little over 100 acres. Oregon is, you know, not just, I mean, I think the facts on the ground speak for themselves, but Oregon is identified as a very strong market for data centers. We're considered the number four market nationwide behind places like Virginia, Phoenix. So, it's, and of course, the United States is the number one market globally. So, this is a market that has beyond regional and national implications and Oregon has a very strong place in it. So, as part of also talking about the needs of data centers and their land needs, we took a close look with, with our partners McKinsey at what these data centers really look like on the ground. This is a very standard example of the type of development that's been happening in, across the two counties. These tend to be 100 acre minimum, a little bit larger than that is the standard. They're building out at four of these large buildings apiece. They each require a substation that uses roughly from five to 10 acres. And the buildings, once they're all done, you get close to about a million square feet of data processing space at these centers. So, they're, they're very large and building out at the rate of 1.5 per year. Obviously, a lot of land is, has been consumed and is still needed. So, looking at the land inventory that you have left here in, of employment land here in Hermiston, this is the process we go through. It's kind of a funnel. We start with looking at all the land in the, within your urban growth boundary. So, not just your city boundary, but the urban growth boundary. And we say, what has the proper zoning for employment? We identify that and then we say, okay, how much of this is still vacant? We identify, we pull that out and then we have a methodology for coming up with an estimate of how much might have some development on it now, perhaps low-value development or a small amount of development for how large the parcel is. So, we estimate, okay, so maybe some infill or redevelopment can happen on those lands. And through that, we identify finally net buildable acres or an estimate of net buildable acres that remain in the community. There are still some other considerations that come into play really after, more so in the next phase of the project. But that might have to do with infrastructure constraints and other reasons that lands may not be buildable. But really, for the state process, we're supposed to just count all net buildable acres. These are where your employment zones are located. Just for reference, the, the purple and pink are your industrial-focused lands. The blue is commercial and the sort of light green, I'm sorry, is, is also industrial. The, the pink is, is mixed-use, commercial and industrial. And the gray is your airport zone. And this is where we found lands remaining. So, this is a representation of your buildable land inventory and where we found some parcels. In this case, the purple is industrial and the red is commercial. So, there is some land left. You see in the, specifically for commercial in the southeast quadrant of the city and some commercial lands distributed throughout. But when we get down to looking at sort of the, what does this mean? How do we sum it up? So, we have the number of sites for commercial industrial and the acreage that amounts to in the upper-left corner there. And so, there is some remaining buildable acreage. But the, the key finding here is sort of the makeup of that acreage. And what you see on the right is the size of these sites. And Hermiston has very few large or even medium-sized commercial or industrial sites remaining. Most of your inventory is in sites that are less than five acres in size. So, while you have some lands available for some types of businesses, obviously, there are others, larger businesses that are going to need larger sites. And obviously, data centers is one example of that, but any sort of large manufacturers, large distribution facilities, even large, big-box retailers, that all those types of businesses are looking at a real shortage of remaining parcels in Hermiston. And this is a comparison then of that 20-year demand side from the employment forecast we had and the remaining buildable lands that I just mentioned. The, we find that sort of on a bulk, you know, gross acreage level, yes, there is a surplus in general, commercial industrial categories. There's a large deficit for land that is suitable for data centers. But again, in the next phases of this project, we're gonna consider not just sort of these bulk numbers, but the makeup of the size of those sites and are they appropriate? And so, while there is technically a surplus, there's also a finding that more large sites are probably needed and not just for data centers. So, that is a summary, quick summary of a lot of data and information that's in the packet before you. And I'm happy to answer any questions or hear any comments that you have at this time.
Can you go back a slide?
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm trying to understand this one a little bit. So, currently, the, the demand is 1,500 acres. Is that accurate, total?
Yes.
And then buildable land, that's what we have currently?
Yes.
Okay, so 690 acres. When you put in 423 acres of industrial, your comments earlier were there were zero acres greater than 50, 4% greater than 20. So, and only 13% of the acres greater than five. So, that doesn't give industrial very much land to build on. So, those must be all pretty small acreages.
That's right. Yeah, they are. There's, I believe there's more in the, for industrial, there's probably more in the five to 20. And, and then finally, those, the remaining sites that are 30 to 50 acres are industrial. Mm-hmm. Yep.
When we're looking at our buildable land inventory slide, we, we kind of went into this with the assumption that lands that are...
Actually, you can back up one more.
This one. The one where we have that large area that's pink, the commercial industrial. We went into it with the assumption that areas that are right along Highway 395 especially, will probably develop commercially rather than industrially. So, because we have that mixed-use zone, it's a little tricky to show exactly what our balance of each one is. We spent a lot of time on the methodology to make sure that we were adequately representing how those are probably going to actually develop because otherwise you would look at it and go, well, that's all industrial. That's probably what's going to happen there. But it's actually probably going to develop commercially like how we saw Ranch and Home right along the highway.
Other questions, Councilmember?
I guess my question is, and I see we have a huge need for, as the mayor was pointing out with his questioning, large parcels. And so, are we going to, I guess with that analysis that we have now, is it, are we going to have sufficient? Because I, I feel like even after this that I'm not sure if we're gonna have enough parcel sizes.
Yeah, so that's essentially a finding coming out of this report. So, the next step in the process is to take the findings of this report and then that feeds into looking at the urban growth, that, you know, urban growth boundary expansion options. And so, in that process, the city will be able to say, look, we, we know what the total numbers say, but we also know that we, we feel like we need this many, you know, 50 to 100 acre sites. We need this many 100-plus acre sites. And those, that can be taken into consideration to include more land in an expansion.
Follow-up?
Yeah.
And I guess, and I hear what you're saying, this is part of the process and, and we'll, we'll get to the, hopefully, the very end. But I guess for me to understand, I guess maybe this is more for city management. Where, where does that available land look like? Is that, is that more, do we feel like that's more north-south? I guess I'm struggling to think or to find that. Or I guess, I don't know if city administration has ideas or thoughts already on that.
Well, we do, we do have thoughts and ideas, but we're just kind of working through the process to, we need to see these conclusions and then start to look at where those types of parcels might exist. And if you, I mean, just looking around the city, that there's not those parcels on all sides of the city. So, I mean, we're really targeting potentially the southern boundary of the city where those larger parcels exist.
Yeah, to get kind of ahead just a little bit, when you're actually looking at an urban growth boundary expansion, you have to look at basically another funnel again. And you're starting, you know, first off, you have to look at areas that are what you would call urban exception areas that are already adjacent to your urban growth boundary. And then you have to look at what are high-value farmlands, what are already developed? And once you start weeding out those areas, you're kind of left with a certain areas that you will do. But it's basically you're performing that alternatives analysis as part of your urban growth boundary work.
Councilwoman?
My question is, since you were saying we don't have enough land and you want to increase the land, are we, is this land that belongs to individuals? And we're talking about maybe down the road doing eminent domain in order to get these 100-acre parcels or 108-parcels? Where's this land coming from?
Again, we'll, we'll be doing the alternatives analysis. Right now, we're not ready to say. We would not do it through eminent domain. That's not how you expand an urban growth boundary. These would remain in private ownership, but then they would develop within the city.
It's just like right now, you know, you own a house that's in the city limits. It's still private property and it's in the city limits. The, the ownership of the land would stay the same even if we expand the urban growth boundary. It just, that private property then becomes in our urban growth boundary that could then become annexed into the city whenever it comes to that time of development.
Okay, so I'm, I'm still not understanding where are you getting this land? I mean, is it just federal land out there that you're gonna try to get?
No, it's, it's land that exists next to the city, next to the urban growth boundary.
No one owns it?
No, everybody, somebody owns it and we can, we can identify. That's what Clint's saying, we don't know exactly which parcels we're talking about. That's the next step after this is to identify specific parcels that we think we would propose to the state that we bring into the urban growth boundary. But it's just like, I mean, there's, for, for many, you know, there, there's parcels in the urban growth boundary right now that are all owned by individual property owners. And that's, that's what we would be doing is just expanding that line. It's an imaginary line, but we wouldn't take ownership of any of it.
So, down the road then, that's what I'm trying to get to. If someone owns this land, if people own this land and we do the urban growth expansion over this, over this, this private land and now we need 100 acres of that land in order to, I don't know, sell to whoever wants to build something?
Well, that would be whoever, let's say XYZ Corporation wants to come and build a, a food processing site. They go and acquire that land. They want city services, so they want to be in the city limits. So, they go through the process that does that. It's all, all of that's done on, by the private side. We're just providing the opportunity for that to be in the city if those private owners want to. We're not gonna develop it. A private person is gonna develop it.
So, the private person still has the option to say, no, I'm not gonna sell my land?
Correct. Yeah, it would be, yeah, just like any, you know, it's a, a fair trade transaction.
And private property owners also have... And private property owners also have the ability to come to the city council and planning commission during the UGB expansion process and testify. You know, I, I support this, I don't support this, they have that ability too.
The letters will be sent out to them saying this?
That's correct. We, we operate with anything that changes a base zone like this, we operate under what we call a measure fifty-six notice. Which is where you send it to each property owner who's in an area proposed for any change. And then on big bold letters on the top of the notice, it's required to say that we're proposing a change in land use regulations that may impact the value of your property.
We got to go through this whole process first.
Correct. This is, that, like I said, that, this is, this is just amending the comprehensive plan to show that we actually do have a deficiency based on our current.
And the state has to approve it?
Yes.
Yeah, before we would even go out and have the conversation?
Yeah. And I actually, um, you have in your letter, in your package, you have a, a letter of support from Business Oregon. Agreeing that this is a well-founded analysis and then just at four fifty-two tonight. I received a email from DLCD, our regional rep, Don Hurt. Who said, I wanted to let you know, I'm not able to be in attendance for tonight's city council meeting, I have another meeting that was. Scheduled prior and I'm not able to move that meeting. I wanted to thank you for including DLCD throughout your economic opportunities analysis process. And for including our economic specialist Lee McElveyn suggested revisions to your draft document. That's where we were talking about how we went back and amended it to work on the national trends. And where the, these type of things are actually going. And then please be sure to let me know if you have any questions with your next steps towards a UGB expansion. Our team is here to help you facilitate that process. So we've actually received two. Items of testimony from the state.
Any other questions or comments? Mark, when Myers Industrial developed, how many acres did that develop on?
Yeah, they purchased forty acres and they developed about a third of it.
It's those type of parcels that I think, you know, we would also need, not just data center parcels, but. You know, we're at that intersection of. Logistics that makes sense for distribution, processing, all of those sort of things, we just don't have any of those sized parcels. All right, any other comments from the council? Okay.
So as far as process goes, I guess, uh, we now take public testimony. And so people wishing to speak are asked to come up to the microphone up front, introduce herself by name and mailing address, limit your testimony to less than five minutes. And we're going to start with proponents, people in favor. Seeing none, neutral parties. Seeing none, any opponents? Anybody online, Lily? All right, the hearing is now closed. City staff will further present findings of fact.
The findings of fact were prepared by our land use council and are attached as exhibit B to the ordinance a little bit further down in your packet. They outline the procedural process through preparing the, the. EOA as well as specific findings in compliance with the statewide planning goals.
All right, any further city council discussion? So Clint, the only other question I have is, process wise, this is step one. When does this process, this part finish and then when does step two?
Step two is probably going to be starting in earnest. Fairly quickly after this, we already have consultants, you approved a contract with Winterbrook Planning. Earlier this year to help us with the UGB process. They are also working with Anderson Perry on the public infrastructure components. Required for urban growth boundary amendments and with Kittleson and Associates for traffic and. Requirements associated with urban growth boundary amendments. There's quite a bit of background that needs to be done, will need to be coordinating with DLCD. At every level of that, as well as, uh, with the alternative sites analysis and working with Yumitila County. So we're probably nine to twelve months before we'll be back here for hearings. But I would anticipate that we'll be seeing at least one, maybe two work sessions as progress goes along, just to have council feedback.
When was the last time we expanded our UGB?
We amended our UGB in two thousand and four for the C and B property.
Okay, so it's been a while.
It's been a while.
Yeah. These are not easy processes.
They are lengthy processes.
And can be contentious, as we've seen in some locations across the state, including lawsuits, so. Um, not anything that's easy to go through or overlooked, or we could slide under the radar in any way, it's pretty open. People have lots of opportunity to participate. Um, they'll have lots of opportunity to speak their mind about whether they feel like. We should be expanding our growth boundary or not, so. Uh, this, I believe is the city's attempt to try and, uh, address the need for. More lands for economic opportunity within our community and our region. Any other comments? Okay. Then can I take a motion to approve findings of fact?
So moved.
Second.
Then moved by Counsel Dron, seconded by Counselor Myers that we approve the findings of fact as presented, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Yes.
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 Motion passes five one, Counsel Linton in opposition. And, um, we will also present more of this during ordinance two, three, six, five. Yes, for final action, okay. Thank you, appreciate you coming this evening. Okay, ten C, adopting a procedure and establishing a program for the sale of individual parcels of class. Of a class of city-owned property, resolution two, three, three, seven. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest from the council? All right, seeing none, hearing guidelines will now be presented by city staff, Ms. Smith.
The city council is holding a public hearing to consider adopting a procedure and establishing a program for the sale of. Individual parcels of a class of city-owned property. The city council will take public testimony on this issue and make a decision at this meeting. The hearing process will begin with a staff report followed by public testimony. The council requests that all people wishing to testify give their name and mailing address before testifying. People wishing to testify should limit testimony to not more than five minutes unless a longer period is provided by the city council. Written testimony will be accepted. After everyone wishing to testify has had an opportunity to speak, the city council will close the public hearing and enter deliberations. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony will be received. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Hearing is now open, city staff will now present its report.
Mr. Morgan?
Mr. Morgan? Yes, so council will remember, uh, back in the spring, you authorized the purchase of approximately forty-four acres of industrial ground. Down on the east side of the new southeast ninth street and south of Penny Avenue, north of Feadville Road. Just to the west of the new Amazon data center. Uh, and specifically, the direction, uh, agreed to by council was that the. City would utilize that forty-four acre property to market for economic development opportunities. And specifically with an effort to market it for, uh, up to five years with a. Uh, incentive-based price to incentivize development and after the end of those five years. Any remaining property would simply, uh, be reevaluated and potentially, uh, simply auctioned, uh, for the highest price. To return the investment from the taxpayers, uh, but the hope is that, uh, most of that property will have developed by that time. Uh, so as we were going through this process, uh, we've had a potential buyer, uh, for the entire site, uh, but we've also since that time. Uh, received interest from a development on approximately ten acres of that site, and so they're looking to. Uh, construct some facilities to, uh, serve the industrial, uh, community here in, in the community. And so as we're going through that process, we identified that we need to, uh, establish a process that allows us to enter into negotiations with the. Buyer in order to execute that sale, and so that's what this process is this evening. Overall, it looks at, uh, the entire forty-four acre site and authorizes city staff to begin negotiations. Uh, with potentially interested parties that want to develop on those, on that site. Uh, but ultimately, in the end, uh, any eventual, uh, sale agreement would come back to city council for approval and open public session. What this process does is it mainly just allows city staff to begin negotiations within certain boundaries. And then from there, uh, bring final agreements to the council for approval. And, uh, city attorney Tovey did all the heavy lifting on the, uh, the legal side of that, so I'll let him jump in and clarify anything that I mistook.
Nothing more, much more to add to that, under state statute to sell, uh, city property. Uh, there's a process that's put in place as far as how you notice and how you have public hearings. Related to single properties, because of how we want to market this forty-four acres, there is an alternative, uh, to the standard. And that's what we're asking the, the council to go with tonight, which would then allow. Uh, the city to work with those forty-four acres either in whole or in parts. Uh, under a program to sell each of those, uh, the property or the parcels. Without having to go back through that, uh, same process over and over. That is under the original statute.
Okay. So we're gonna open this up to, uh, public testimony. People wishing to speak are asked to state their name and mailing address and limit their comments to less than five minutes. And we'll start with proponents, people in favor of. Seeing none, any neutral parties? Seeing none, no opponents? None, okay, hearing is now closed. Council discussion, questions? Any, yes, Counsel Linton?
Like, um, clarification that this is just for that forty-four point, um, plus acres? Okay. And you said that, uh, you already had one person that wanted to buy all of it and then another person just want ten acres?
Yeah, so again, part of the justification for acquiring the property was we wanted to make sure that we could maximize that. Community asset for economic development and so we do have, uh, a patient partner that would be willing to purchase the entire site at a lower price. Uh, but we would like to market it for property or development that actually wants to develop it, so. Uh, this opportunity, they're willing to pay significantly more, uh, for just those ten acres than the. Kind of pocket buyer that we have, as well as developing around a thirty thousand square foot, uh, facility on the site for employment.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I'd also confirm that through this resolution, we are talking about a class of properties, so that would be the forty-four acres and not any other. Properties throughout the city.
Any other questions from the council? Okay. We'll present this item during resolution two, three, three, seven for final action. Okay. Moving on to eleven B, we skipped eleven A, we withdrew eleven A, so we're gonna do eleven B now, which is ordinance number twenty-three sixty-five, economic analysis. Economic opportunities analysis update, uh, Ms. Smith?
Yeah, so you've heard the presentation on this subject and, and held the public hearing, so if there's any further questions. We have the, the experts here to answer those.
Are there any, uh, council questions, comments about the economic opportunity analysis update? Uh, any public comment on resolution, or I'm sorry, ordinance number twenty-three sixty-five? Okay, seeing none, mayor requests first reading the ordinance be read by title only and calls for a roll call, roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, Mr. Tovey?
Ordinance number two, three, six, five, an ordinance amending the city of Hermiston comprehensive plan to include an economic opportunities analysis. And buildable land inventory for the planned years of twenty twenty-four to twenty forty-four. Mr. Mayor?
Mayor requests that the ordinance be put on for final adoption at this meeting, that the second reading be by title only, calls for a roll call, roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, Mr. Tovey?
Second reading by title only of ordinance number two, three, six, five. An ordinance amending the city of Hermiston comprehensive plan to include an economic opportunities analysis and buildable land inventory. For the planned years of twenty twenty-four to twenty forty-four, Mr. Mayor?
And can I get a motion that ordinance number twenty-three sixty-five be adopted and become effective thirty days after adoption by the city council?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Counselor McCarthy, seconded by Counselor Myers, that we approve ordinance number twenty-three sixty-five. Be adopted and become effective thirty days after adoption by the city council, roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, five one, Counsel Linton in opposition. Resolution number.
That wasn't not unanimously, right?
Was that, did I say unanimously?
Yes.
Sorry. Ordinance was adopted five to one. Counselor Linton in opposition.
Correct.
Resolution number two, three, three, seven, adopting a procedure and establishing a program for the sale of individual parcels of class of city-owned property, Ms. Smith?
Yeah, we'd be happy to answer any further questions or comments related to, uh, the discussion we just had, related to.
Any comments or questions from the council? Counsel Brown?
I just wanna, again, thank the city city manager, um, for being good financial stewards. Of, uh, the assets that we have here in the community, I think this is a great idea, thank you.
Others? Okay, any public comment on resolution two, three, three, seven? Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution two, three, three, seven and lay it upon the record? It's been moved by Counsel Barone, seconded by Counselor Harden? Yes, that, uh, we adopt resolution two, three, three, seven and lay it upon the record, roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Uh, moving on to twelve A, possible adoption LLC priority issues, Ms. Smith?
Yes, now bringing our work session, uh, topic forward. If there's any further discussion or questions related to the five items that I highlighted in the. Initial staff report or any other discussion, be happy to.
Any other questions by the council, uh, or comments about LLC priorities? Okay, I would entertain a motion, um. To adopt, uh, the LOC priority issues.
So moved.
Second.
So you're adopting the, um, recommended priorities of city.
As presented, yeah.
Okay. So it's been motioned by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Myers. Any public comment about the adoption of those? Okay, roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, six, zero. All right, move on to committee reports, any committee reports this evening? Yeah, Counsel McCarthy?
Uh, just that we actually have, since we didn't have on last month the Parks and Rec Committee meeting, uh, this Thursday.
Okay, perfect. Yes, Counsel Brown?
Uh, we did not have an EOT committee meeting this month, uh, we did not have a quorum, so we're set to meet this next month. And as far as Hispanic advisory committee, I know we met, but I was, I was not present, unfortunately, I don't know if Keltor and Ron was there.
Present?
Yes, so we, it wasn't a Hispanic advisory committee, it was like the Hispanic Heritage Planning Committee meeting. Uh, which I did attend, um, we would like to extend an invitation to all of those that want to attend. Um, the event is going to take place on September twenty-second. At the Festival Street from one to six P M. Uh, flyer has been created and, um, Lily is working on, working with Parks and Recs or somebody. To get it posted if you haven't already done so, but it's in the works. Um, so we are excited, it's the first event and we hope to expand. In the future.
So what sort of activities can we look forward to?
Well, there is going to be, uh, folkloric dancers that will be there. You are invited to be there and I believe Kathleen.
I'm not planning to dance. Is there a beer garden? Then maybe.
And so there's, um, trying to find the, uh, the flyer that was created, I found it. There's gonna be food, vendors, music, um, there's different. Music that is going to be playing throughout the event. Um, I believe the police department has been invited to attend or the fire department for sure. Um, so we're looking to kind of partner up with, with other departments to. To grow the event, so we'll see, we'll see how it goes. I, I am not the one that is kind of moving all the different parts, I was just there, you know, to support. I was just there, you know, to support.
Another event in downtown Hermiston?
Yes.
On the Festival Street, be great. So that's September twenty-second, which I believe is a Sunday, one to six P.M. on the Festival Street.
Yes.
Okay, good. Any other committee reports? Councillor Harden?
I didn't, I missed the meeting on faith-based-
You know, your public infrastructure committee? Your-
Yes, I'm on there, but I think you probably took better notes than I did.
Okay, I will speak to it. We're looking at, I guess we've budgeted this year for an additional staff member to help in, I don't know which departments they're going to fall under. Is it going to be water, wastewater, both?
Yeah, I mean initially it'll be budgeted out of the recycled water.
Recycled water. So to look at working with our community partners or business agencies on making sure that the discharging that they're doing of the products post-usage, water into wastewater is at the quality that it should be. So it's not putting any undue cost onto the rest of the members of the use of the industrial or the wastewater system. So looking at the fats, oils and greases that are sometimes put into the system, trying to hold those folks accountable that are discharging those to pre-treating. Also down the line, looking at industrial pretreatment and looking at backflow prevention. So adding a staff member that can help kind of oversee all of those departments and work with our partners to make sure people are in compliance with all those regulations. We've got some updates on projects that are undergoing construction. As you guys have seen, if you drive around the city, construction going on everywhere on our streets, got some updates. Most of those will be done sometime shortly, within the next month or two. Feadville-
Not next-
Not anytime soon. But lots of instruction, construction going out on Feadville. Again, continue to avoid that area if possible because it's constantly being opened and closed and opened and closed. I'm excited about the ASR, the recharge project. So that's progressing forward and will be hopefully moving forward here sometime in the next year. I miss anything, councillor?
I think we've got the gear road in Harper that's-
Yes.
Keeping it as it is, okay?
Still working with the railroad on a couple of projects. Got some offers out for some property along First Street or Front First Street for the trail project expansion, but also Gear and Harper, ongoing conversations with the railroad. So nothing in the near future is going to be happening with that. Okay? Any other committee reports? None?
Well, the library is going to meet next Wednesday. The library board at five o'clock. And PAC, Hispanic Advisory Committee, is meeting on the sixteenth.
Okay, so we'll look forward to those reports next meeting.
Yes.
Mayor's report. I've got nothing today. Nothing, other than glad to see kids are back in session in school. Drive safe through our school zones. I know our full force police office is out there watching. I've heard, I've heard folks getting tickets, so. So be safe while you're out there and be smart. Don't go speeding through school zones. Anything else from the council? Yes, councillor Lynton?
This is a sensitive area that I want to bring up. I had the opportunity to look at the camera, I guess the dash cam, of Tony Colbrate. He was, a call came in saying that there was a black male walking down the street, talking to himself and flaring his hands.
Excuse me for a second, councillor Lynton. Is this information that is public information? Or is this information that's private, like involved in an ongoing case?
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's involving an ongoing case or not at this time, but it probably will be-
I don't want it to be.
I'm not asking for a comment.
Okay.
I'm just making the council aware of the incident that happened.
Okay.
I've had a good relationship, I believe, with the police department. I've talked to them in the past. And it only takes a couple of people that can do something that can ruin, ruin, make the entire department look bad. I'm not saying that the entire department look bad. From what I saw, there was a lot of things that happened that should not have happened. And I wish that we could show it here to everybody to see it. But that's all I have to say about it at this time, because more will be coming out down the road.
Okay, thank you. Any other councillors' reports? Yes?
Well, not a report, but is it appropriate to make a follow-up comment or question to councillor Lynton?
Maybe you can talk to her after, council?
Perfect.
Okay. Did you have anything else?
I did. I attended the meeting with the, the folks that came to talk about transportation. You were able to meet with them and as well as the city manager last week. It was kind of neat. It was my first time.
Good job.
So it was really nice for them to come to our area and see the needs that we have in rural Oregon. And I know that budgets are pretty tight and maybe, I don't know, how they will be able to address all of the needs that I'm sure were, you know, expressed by the many folks that were able to have those private conversations with the legislators. But it was nice to hear the testimonies of folks that have benefited from, from the public transportation that our area offers, as well as maybe hearing of possible other ways that maybe the program can be expanded. So I'm just thrilled that they were able to come. And I know that you're in a different capacity where you are able to maybe express that better and just let them know how, it was nice to be able to see them in our area and hear what, and see the needs of, of the communities.
Yeah. Councillor Dran did a great job. She came and testified. That's not always easy to do in front of a table full of legislators. And, and she did a very good job. City manager Smith and myself were able to communicate earlier in the day that a roundtable, thirty-five local officials and all legislators were able to talk in a more casual format and kind of just went around the table three or four times and just, they would ask a question and each of the individuals was able to comment or participate. And it was great to hear the conversation. It was great to hear what's going on in other communities and the concerns that they have. And the legislators to hear the conversation. And it was nice to hear from them, from their perspectives as well. We were very well represented. Got a lot of positive feedback about how well it went and this being probably their best session to date. So that was nice to hear. I was able to share some of our local bounty with them. I brought a bin of melons out there and everybody got to go home with a melon. And I gave them all away, the whole bin, so that was great. And I got some follow-up thank yous from some of the legislators too. So it was nice to have them come out again. Last time in two thousand seventeen, when they were here, I was able to testify then as well. And that was part of, you know, First Street. We had asked for First Street funding and in part of HB twenty-seventeen, we were able to get some First Street funding. So your voice matters. It gets heard. Would encourage more councillors, when those opportunities participate come up, that they do that. They want to hear from you. You are the representative. They hear from the city managers and staff all the time. They want to hear from the electives. And so that matters to them and they value that feedback. And, and it was nice to have the showing that we had and to host again, so. Thank you, Maria, for participating. Any other council comments? Yeah, councillor Brown?
Had a comment, but I want to thank you councillor Dran and mayor Dratzen for, for representing us well. Even the gestures and you as LLC president with the, with the melons. I think that's a good representation of what this town and of this community is all about. And I'm happy that they have that impression of, of us here. So thank you guys for, for the work that you do. I actually just wanted to tout the city, some of the city facilities. I actually got to go to a wedding this Saturday. It was here at the community center. And I just remember the community center's got a little something to it. It's, it's nice and, it's nice, cute, adorable, demure. All of the above. So it's, it's, it was nice and pretty in there and so it was, it was a great event, so.
Very good. Anything else, council? All right, Mr. Smith? Nothing this evening. We do have an executive session, okay? So the city council of the City of Hermiston will now meet in executive session. Executive session room for purposes discussing matters pertaining to negotiating real property transactions. Executive session is held pursuant to ORS one-nine-two-point-six-six-zero-two-E, which allows the council to meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the council to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Other members of the audience are excluded. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, the council will return to open session with the audience may attend. The executive session will last ten minutes? Okay. Hold this to it, Josh. All right. We are in recess.